The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No special recognitions or presentations, no delegations, is that correct?
That's correct.
Before superintendents update, if there's no objection, since we have a legal update that will require executive session, if there's no objection, we will move item number 11 until now. Any objections?
No objections.
Okay, so we are at legal and disciplinary matters. Is there a motion?
motion.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Daughtry to go into executive session where you read the exception under legal.
I am in pursuit to 69-9A-412 of the West Virginia Code that the Board go into executive session to discuss any legal matter which by express provision of federal law or state statute or rule of court is rendered confidential or which is not considered a public record within the meaning of the Freedom of Information Act as set forth in Article 1, 29b-1, so on, and Chapter 29b of this code.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So this motion carries. We will be in executive session.
No, no, I didn't go along here.
That's no reason, right?
That's it.
To regular session.
So moved on.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries and moves us down to our regular agenda, superintendent's update.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a few things on the superintendent's update. I just wanted to let you know the summer school program has been running. We're in our fourth week and it concludes at the end of this week, although we have Energy Express sites that still will be in operation. Lot of great things happening in the summer programs. Mr. Oliverio and I believe even the paper got to go out to the Energy Express site at West Milford. We had E. Gordon Gee there for a visit and he actually was there with We had E. Gordon Guy there for a visit and he actually was there with one of our principals' sons. He is the vice president of student body at WVU, Hunter Moore. So it was just an exciting thing. So we've been trying to feature some of the things going on at the summer programs. So it's went really well. We've made notes of things that, you know, we need to maybe fix for next year and we're planning on rolling out these same programs next summer. So we'll be budgeting for that. And the other thing we have is a facility update. Mr. Luntens?
First of all, the Wall Street Elementary School, it's going well. Potential completion should take place this way, which is Friday. There's still some items that have not been shipped yet and that has nothing to do with contractor. Some of the secure entrance. Some of those mechanic things need to be, the glass, the actual passthrough door, those need to, they haven't arrived yet. The elevator is getting completed and our guys are up there, our maintenance guys are up there doing a lot of the tile work. That kind of blends in with some of the work that was done as part of renovation. So they've done a great job. Also our maintenance guys are putting in the walk-in freezer, putting in the combi oven and we just, that was something that the contractor didn't own. So rather than bid that out, Dani just said we'll take care of that ourselves. So that was a significant cost there. So we have a meeting tomorrow on that. We also have a meeting across the road and the venue is coming down to do some of the site prep on the new bus terminal, the parking lot. Dani and also Jim Linger are going down to meet with them, along with myself. So. So it's all kind of starting to take place at the same time. We're going to be doing a good bit of a movie the second week of August from the school. So everything's packed up and ready to go from the old school to the new school. If you don't have any questions about Wall Street, we'll go to the floor. Right now, it's just they're taking a lot of things out and it looks different than it did when I caught there. The ceilings are out, a lot of the doors are, you know, are out. There's a lot of asbestos, the pavement being taken into place. But they found a lot of hot material with the asbestos in the insulation, the window glaze, things that weren't necessarily accounted for. You don't know when you get into those buildings how much. So they're doing a lot of that work. And that's just going to be a long-winded process. But again, their thinking may have some time in late spring is when that project could be completed. I'll start to get some pictures to you all when we can actually get through there. Right now, it's all kind of blocked off in certain areas. Other than that, it's going, it's going, you know.
Where are we at with the United High School?
Yeah, I'm saying the Reissa building. I know that you've been there and even Chris, whatever, took a look at the kitchen facilities. And Todd's been there looking at the technology to make sure we've got thongs and cameras and everything's working, so.
So we've started on that project also?
We've been in that building multiple times.
The building looks good.
It must be in good shape.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks good. They've worked all the floors.
By the way, I saw London was being auctioned.
Oh.
Probably. I said to Gary.
But it looks good and the fire marshal's been down to inspect it. They've worked on the fire panel. Everything seems to be good. HBA seems nice and cold when I was in there. So it's in good shape.
I knew we had just gone through.
Don't they have to block some spaces off to make some extra space for us, right? Chris and I did go over and visit.
Chris, you want to talk a little bit about, you were looking at the food service piece there.
We are. It's limited the equipment in the kitchen, so we're going to have to get some heat from this from the old United that's currently in storage to the kitchen and the old Reissa building. I'm meeting with the cafeteria manager and the principal on Friday morning. Got a plan on how we can service it in an efficient manner. Breakfast and lunch and if they would ask American School Program, we'll address those too. But I'll share more details. I thought I'd get back to the principal and capture a major item to get out. But we're looking at probably preparing your meals offsite, shipping them to Reissa building. We'll have about 100, 125 kids who have.
For the lunch.
For the lunch, yeah.
I have one other question. Down at Lincoln, where we're working on the new facility, okay. Are we involved in that at all or is that all on the contractor? Because I noticed there's a lot of digging going on and I noticed a lot of white trucks, which would be probably hiring. I mean, I didn't think we were supposed to have anything.
We are. It's hooking up the utilities, the gas and the water. So we had to bring in an extra tack. That was something that they had talked about that from the beginning. That we would have to do that. And Joe retired before we actually got to that. They kind of committed that we would do that. And the water, it's, you know, it's not a huge project, but there is some digging across the parking lot where the.
They put it ahead and all the ground out there today.
And then the gas line too.
And I saw a lot of our white trucks here and I didn't, I didn't think we had anything involved in that. I thought it was a completely on Lincoln and all the contractor.
It's just the utility work. It's just some of the utilities. And that's just the hook, yeah.
Mr. President, I do have two things I'd like to add to our facility, so that's okay.
Sure.
I actually spoke to the board earlier today and over the Fourth of July, I was speaking with some teachers from the United. It just kind of took me off guard. What is our plan with the Wilsonburg? I know we've been in discussions, we've gone and looked at it. You know, a person came here and said it would be a great idea. I mean.
We actually let out a bid, we bid the work on that to Thresher. Thresher has.
I don't think we.
But we had Thresher.
Thresher looked at it, gave us cost estimate for some of the work that needed to be done to upgrade.
Right. We haven't moved forward with it, but we retained Thresher to remodel that.
Well, I'm saying like I just know a conversation. I never knew of anything that we had actually moved on and that's what I'm asking. Where, because, you know, the people I talked to, their thought was, I didn't know if something needed to be improved and we have to have the community meetings. I mean, I don't know.
Not closing the school, we'd just be moving. And we wouldn't need the community meeting.
But I was moving down there with it based on the cost.
That was our, I think that was, that's our plan.
I think she's meaning initially it was Adamson and we changed it to Wilsonburg.
Because there's more land and they preferred that we put greenhouses there and all that. But that was taken care of, and you may not remember, but that was the year we actually had a vote where we authorized Thresher engineering to give us the.
I remember that, the cost estimate to.
For Wilsonburg.
But that was just to see if it was feasible, right? I mean, did we get that back or?
We.
That was to see what work needed to be completed with drainage and to take a look at, it was mainly primarily the drainage where that.
Where it sits on a low spot.
Right. And in the classrooms. But I mean, that was, we had talked about that, that that's our goal was, but in the Wilsonburg, correct?
Well, that was a choice of the people from United. They didn't want to go to Adamson because they said there was too many outlets where the kids could go out the door and disappear in the community. They felt, you know, that it was a much better situation at Wilsonburg.
Would you like to have that room?
One straight hallway?
Yeah, I mean, if we need to.
Do you want us to bring that back to an agenda and make that an official, that this is the move that we're making?
Well, no, that's not what I'm like actually asking. What I'm asking is, I just don't know where it was. I mean, we had one gentleman come in here and everybody up here went, oh, that is a good idea. But see how much it costs? They were talking about moving the school and that's a big deal. And I just don't think it's casual conversation and I just wanted to know what we have and have not asked.
Was part of our closure, I mean, moving into that building, was that part of our, that may be part of our closure back if we went to the SBA.
Some of the closure. I think in some of those closure hearings.
We did allude to it in the.
We did allude to it.
I know the state school board, when they met at Robinson Green, we did, we were asked what our plan was and that was the state school board was told that that was our plan was to move into Wilsonburg.
But that's what I'm talking about, told. It just seems like this has always been like a conversation.
But it's part of the record is what I'm saying. And I think we discussed.
And so it is in the filings with the SBA.
It should be with the SBA that that's our plan.
Well, I mean, we have to double check with, we didn't have to submit a plan like that. We submitted that we were going to move it to a location at the time.
I think we, I know for the state school board, we specifically said Wilsonburg.
I guess what I'm asking is let's get loose and tie that up. That's all I'm asking. So we know exactly where we're going and it's not on just conversation or being told at a retreat or something like that.
I mean, as far as, as far as I'm concerned, that was our plan all along.
I mean, have you seen the cost estimate?
I don't know a different plan.
From Thresher?
Do we have, do we have something from Thresher?
We, yes, we do. I can't put my hand in for it right now. We do have that.
Okay, maybe if you can get into this then.
Yeah, that's all I'm just worried about and I'm not against it or anything. I'm just saying that, you know, they kind of dropped and it was just conversation. And I do believe we need to get these things finalized. I mean, that's a huge part of it.
Right.
Or are we thinking that the Reissa?
A year down the road before they would move into Wilsonburg.
Yeah.
Yeah, a year down the road.
But we're going to have to do whatever renovations.
Renovate.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, but we can't renovate while they're still in Wilsonburg till they get in.
Yeah.
So the Reissa is more long-term?
Not long, long-term, but it may be a little bit longer because, yeah, Wilsonburg has to move out before we can renovate for United down there, so.
And they said that there was minimal, I think renovations.
Yeah, it's not a whole lot.
And I thought all along it was going to go up into the last, then it was going, we'd go into Adamson. And then the United people spoke up and said, no.
We'd rather go to Wilsonburg.
We would rather go to Wilsonburg. And we also, that was a great idea. Let's see how much it would be in a cost. And that's the end of it.
Well, we'll get the.
And I basically, all I'm asking is that we get this all tied up and we know exactly the direction we're going with it. So, you know, now the Reissa, this and that, and we're doing kitchens. I'm just saying we really need to tidy that up a little bit to be more clear for everybody involved. And my other thing I wanted to bring up was this. You know, three years ago, I would have never noticed certain things because of course I wasn't disabled at that time. But like if I go to a grocery store, everyone says you can get like a cart or whatever, but to get into a grocery store or even UHC, I have to cross a two-way traffic pattern. And I can't do that. And when we went to South Harrison, I can't do that. And I went down the steps right in the front. Or I had to get clear, I couldn't park. I would have had to get clear down in between the two schools and come up around. With that being said. When we were touring that school, we have extremely wide steps down to that basement area where a car could pull in with someone handicapped. And I think it's something that we should look into to put a chair lift right there where someone could just sit on a chair and go up those steps. Because, you know, the steps go down and then you have to go in where is, I'm just saying it's something to look at. When I was there, I noticed things like that now that I would have never noticed three years ago. But my biggest fear wherever I go is crossing two lanes of main highway, I don't know deep though, at Lowe's, the grocery store, that UHC. And now I'm going to get from a parking lot to the front door where they have handicap things like either wheelchair or something. So, but it's that little bit of double road right there that most people don't think about. So with that being said, I see it at a lot of our schools. I mean, if people win like the handicap area right to the front door, we don't have much of that. And I see, I see South Harrison and it's just perfect because their steps were so extremely wide. And I really think, and honestly, if there were sports being played down in that lower part, somebody that was handicapped more than me could never get down there. Because I know we have an elevator, but we don't have it to the very bottom, correct?
The elevator's in the high school.
Okay, okay, but there is no way. All I'm saying is it's not that big of a deal and I think that's something we should look at, one of those chairlifts that go up there.
We are installing a handicapped accessible sidewalk. And we discussed the steps for up and the chairlift.
I just think the chairlift, I mean, it just lends itself to that. That's the only, I mean, not all schools have that. But when we went down those steps and I saw the big double doors at the bottom of these super wide steps, it lends, that school lends it to something that nice. And the ability to do it. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I hope we can look into that.
The only other thing we have is the United Technical Center. We have a meeting there Friday.
Yes, yes. All right. There's special recognitions down there. Mr. Call informed us that he had three students that finished in the top 10. Two of them was from Dogbridge County and one was in the adult program of the United Technical Center winners of national skills competition. And which is, you know, the best they've done in a long time. Also, he explained that they've gotten some money from a new SBA grant of approximately $380,000. And it was going to be used to address the parking lot. If you're ever down there on the one far end. It floods and, you know, they could stop troweling, they said, because it's so deep back there. So it's going to be fixed. The road's going to be properly fixed so that it doesn't build up a lot of water there. Also, any money's in left was going to be used towards possibility of the security fence all the way around the compound. And then they talked about a new entryway, the canopy and all. So they're going to look at that. Also, there was a recommendation to hire a practical nursing instructor. They also are going to hire a new math instructor, a young lady by the name of Alyssa Colton. There was a couple resignations. Jennifer Alusko, who was in the practical nursing, she just left and went back into being a nurse in Mon County. And also George Haskins, who was a collision repairer and they, this is a very important position. He resigned because he lives in Salem and he is going to be the assistant principal at Buckhannon Medical School. So he's going to drive from Salem to Buckhannon every day and he gave up his, so they're in the process of trying to find a collision repair instructor. And then the situation with Barbara Mayer, they're in, the family's in a court situation trying to get somebody that's going to be the power of attorney over her medical issues. And I believe she's going on a 60-day.
She's on an unpaid medical.
Unpaid medical leave for another approximately 60 days. And then there was a thing with Charlotte Lake and it was tabled, had to be checked into a little bit more and they're going to bring it back the next meeting. And I think that's pretty much it.
Thank you. That's all I have for superintendent's update.
Okay, who is down to approval of consent items? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Enter new business. Contract for services with educator coordinator for parent educator resource center. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we have approved for contract for services with educator coordinator for parent educator resource center.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Contract for services with grand families coordinator.
I make a motion to approve the contract for services for grand families coordinator.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Harrison County Title I Parent Family Engagement Policy.
I make a motion to approve.
So it's approval policy not to put it out on comment?
Yes.
A comment period?
July 28th.
Yes, for till through July 28th. Okay, so it's been moved by Vice President DeVano for public comment for till July 28th, as they're saying, and it's been seconded as messenger. till July 28th. And it's been seconded this messenger. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. MOU Marion County and Harrison County Board of Education. And from what I'm reading, that's for them to do on Medicaid billing. Correct?
That's one of the services that we contracted with them that needs to be a reset thing. Reset service. We share.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No old business, policy updates brings down to personnel matters. And we do have an addendum and I'll read those, uh, since Mr. Godfrey's on the phone. Uh, they're, they're in addition to our personnel agenda. There is employment of Ronald Keener, principal full-time, 240-day employment term. South Harrison Middle School effective July 26th, 2021. Uh, transfer and assign Donald W. Powell from assistant principal full-time, 220-day employment term. Big Elm Elementary, principal full-time, 235-day employment term. Big Elm Elementary effective July 20th, 2021. Susan A. Miller from school psychologist, full-time, 240-day employment term. Itinerant schedule, Harrison County Board of Education building base to supervisor of pupil services, full-time, 250-day employment term, Harrison County Board of Education building effective July 14th.
I make a motion to approve.
Actually, if I could real quick, uh, I would like to pull out one, um, one item and vote on it separately. And that's an extracurricular resignation of Fred Channel. So we'll pull that out. You can make your motion on everything except for that.
I'll make my, I would like to, I make the motion to approve the personnel and the personnel addendum with the exclusion.
No, right. Yeah. And we'll pull that out separate. So you don't even have to do that. It'll just be a separate item. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now on the extracurricular contract, a resignation of Fred Channel. I'd just like to say, and I know we can't turn down an extra, or we can't turn down a resignation. Basically, if someone wants to resign, they can. But I think Mr. Channel and, and both the Channels have done a great service to Lincoln High School and built the largest band in the county. And, and, uh, just as a symbolic gesture, you can vote for, but I'm going to vote against, uh, accepting his resignation. I know we kind of have to. It's just, I think that someone, you know, he needs to understand that, uh, he built a great marching band there and he's resigning from that. And I think it's a shame. So with that, is there a motion for, uh, to accept the resignation of Mr. Channel?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Doug, I guess motion carries?
Uh, yeah.
Motion carries. And that's fine. I just wanted it to be a, you know, a symbolic gesture. Yeah, three to two. So. And I think everyone here understands that Mr. Channel has done a great job. So with that, is there a motion? Are actually, uh, comments. Uh, so Mr. Godfrey?
I, I have no comment. I disagree. Regardless of that, I agree with Mr. Fred Channel. He has a fantastic job. It's guiltiness.
Thank you.
I agree the same. I self-forgive him and his wife before I was on the Board of Education down there. And it's a great program and it was a good unity back and forth between the schools. And it's unfortunate that he has resigned and we're losing him as a board director.
Mr. Hope?
Um, go ahead. I, I also. Go ahead.
I'm good.
You're good. Oh, uh, are we, are we going to have a retreat here in the county or, or anything before school? You know, where we bring in all the, because like you said, there's a lot of changes that have been made. And, you know, I think before we ever start as a board member, you know, I'd like to know, you know, where we're going, what we're doing, uh, in regard, I mean, it's a little confusing.
I guess I would, yeah.
From here to there, brought in new people and.
If we don't have, if we don't have, if there's no objection.
I'm curious of that.
Right. And, and I thought maybe what we could do, because we do have new people in new places. And I do agree with it. We don't, you know, we're still not far enough past, you know, everything to, to go somewhere. And so possibly, maybe if we could arrange it back in our steam center even and have lunch brought in. Uh, you know, start, you know, 10:00 in the morning or so and go till four or five in the afternoon. The problem you have is, I mean, we can go somewhere else in the county if there's someplace, but.
No, 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 no. I mean, I, I can't see.
That way our people are here and, you know, we can, you know, possibly, like I said, have lunch here. And if we, that way we can do a work session that lasts several hours.
I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather start early.
Well, and whenever we can, as long as everyone's on board.
Eight thirty? Eight thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just take a day and do it here rather.
And then that way finish, maybe finish early and all, like you said, because they're already back at work and they will.
And I agree. And we, and then they're here in the building. So that, that gives us an opportunity here from all the departments.
Especially, you know, if it's.
We'll get together and pick a date and then share it with you.
Yeah.
And then, and make a schedule of who, you know, who you're bringing in, if you're bringing in elementary principals.
So you want it similar to what you do at Stonewall?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't. I, I mean, I really liked it like the first time, but then it was like, I mean, it just seemed like it was almost like an assembly line. Uh, this is what we're doing, this is grand, blah, 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 and out the door they went. I mean, and that's how I felt about it. When I don't think that was the initial, like, heart reason for Stonewall or for us to get together with the principals. But that is what it was. We sat there and every principal stood up. Uh, this is what we're doing, we've achieved this, blah, 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 and out the door. And I don't know whatever happens after they walk out the door. And so I think maybe we should look at a different format.
Well.
One that is worth, I mean, you go to a door and you bring somebody.
Right, exactly. But, you know, we have new department heads and I'd like to talk to them.
Yeah, yeah, I think there should be another format because of that alone.
And if nothing more also, you know, I don't know that everyone on this board's been through every part of this building and to every department. And maybe we go to them and, and see what they need and what they're doing, you know, along with that. So, you know, during a working day. And so.
But also we're, we're looking at what goes on in our schools and, you know, I mean, Dura's made at least one grade higher and that's Mr. Alvario, uh, since she's been here. So, I mean, we're really, you know, I, I mean, he showed me some things there upstairs and, uh, you know, I think it's going to be a valuable asset now. And that was, you know, tongue in cheek that.
Now, now that would be a wonderful thing for him to present to the new, to the principals.
Well, we can, we can come up with, right. I understand where you come from. I'll come up with, I'll sit down at the door and come up with something.
But when you said it's a perfect example.
And we may have some way to involve the principals in some way, but you're right. We don't need them coming and saying everything's great. Here's what I do. Here's my PowerPoint. And we, we can, I understand that, you know, we want to know what they want. So I'll, I'll get with the door and we'll come up with.
For, for example, Ronald Keener. I don't know Ronald Keener from that. So it'd be nice to be able to put a name in the face of him. Uh, Donnie Powell. I mean, I've seen the gentleman once or twice, but I don't know anything, bit more about, uh.
Well, that may be something we can kind of do it around lunch, where we can.
Susan Will. I probably know Susan Will.
Do it around lunch.
Informal discussion type thing. Bring him in, introduce him, informal.
Well, I will say this as to what Doug is saying. And you can take it any way you want it. But I would highly recommend to anyone, a new hire in Harrison County, come to the board meeting when you're on the agenda. So to introduce yourself so Doug doesn't notice who you are. I think promotion and at these salaries, they could walk, they could walk into the door and say, hi, I am the new principal. I'm just saying, I think that's proper. And COVID is no longer an excuse not to be here when we're voting on you. Just want to make that comment because I was thinking it all, when I looked at the big red dots right there.
I think that used to be really a practice because.
It is a practice.
It's kind of, yeah, it's kind of wanes really with, but you're right.
We can build something around.
Larger hires.
And maybe because Doug made a real good point. I mean, we're looking at big salaries, they only made a few arm. It just, it's on their face. Is all I'm saying. It's on their face.
We forced Tammy and Julie and Chris.
So.
No, that's Julie noted. I understand.
Is there, uh, any other board member comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Chairman, please, go ahead, please.